Okay, very good. Good morning, everyone. This, the regular Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners is hereby called to order. To ask if everyone would please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you will, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the agenda with item five removed from the consent agenda and placed later down the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, as you heard amended. Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Yes, I will. Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
And when we get down to the consent agenda, we'll make a decision about where to put that, put that item. The next item on our agenda are recognitions, and we have two, and I will first turn to Chief Webster.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us a few moments to recognize Sergeant Chris Braddy and his 15 years of service to the town. Chris started with the department in 2006. He rose to the rank of sergeant really quick in three short years. In 2009, he took over that role. He also served his 10 years on the emergency response team as the, and rose to the position of team commander. And he sort of retooled himself now, and he's looking at instructorship, and he's already been to school and obtained his general instructorship, and we'll soon be sending him off to firearms to become a firearms instructor. You know, like, Chris stopped by the office yesterday, and I said, "Chris, do you have anything you would like for me to pass on to the mayor and the board?" And he said, and he said, "Yeah, I sure do." He goes, "Tell them that I am the glue that holds this department together." And although I knew he meant that in a joking way, he really speaks the truth, because the sergeant position is the glue that holds a department together. They are that key line between the patrol officer and the administrative types. And I gotta tell you that Chris excels in this position. He is a consummate professional. He has certainly gained my trust and confidence, and I just have a great level of appreciation for what he does and how he carries himself. Chris, thank you, and I look forward to seeing what you accomplish next.
Thank you, sir.
Chris, yeah, Chris, anything that you would like to say this morning?
No, sir, I just appreciate it, and appreciate being here for 15 years and look forward to the future, and hopefully, one day, when I get to the point that Chief Brinkley's in, my hair will be probably still about the same grade as his is, and I'll still be confused with him all the time when I see people out there.
Well, we want to thank you for your excellent years of service, and, you know, you're, you're the really, you really are the model NAGS head officer. You bring the combination of the professionalism and the attitude and a little sense of humor. And that's, you know, it's perfect for a town like ours, your interactions with the public, and so we really appreciate you. I'll ask if any of the commissioners would like to say anything?
Mayor, just a second. Chris, thank you for all your work through the years. Enjoyed working with you and see that you're continuing your career. And congratulations on your instructor rating and good luck with firearms certification.
Thank you.
Great. Hearing no others, then, thank you, Officer Braddy, and be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You guys have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is another recognition, and I'll turn to Chief Randy Wells.
Good morning, Mayor, distinguished commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize one of our employees. It's my pleasure to bring to before you for recognition Matthew Swain. Matthew's been with NAGS Head Fire Rescue for 10 years. Matthew joined our department as a probationary firefighter and worked his way through the ranks to become a fire captain. He serves at Station 16. Matthew has constantly sought to improve himself. He holds a bachelor's degree in fire science from Fayetteville State University. He's very active in training, and he holds other certifications such as North Carolina Certified Emergency Medical Technician, North Carolina Child Safety Seat Technician, Hazardous Materials Operation Level. He has certifications to the fire officer one and two, fire instructor one and two, and his passion is rescue. He is a technical rescue technician and agriculture rescue technician. His passion extends beyond that because he's gone out and sought training to become an amicus rescue tool technician to work on the large jaws of life tools that we use. Matthew's quick action and excellent skills during two separate incidents in 2018 earned him two lifesaving awards. Matthew has taken on the additional responsibility to act as our training officer. He develops lesson plans, coordinates hands-on training, and is instrumental in organizing and leading our live-fire evolutions each year. Matthew has proven himself to be an excellent company officer. He has respect of his supervisors and his peers. Matthew lives in Columbia with his wife of 10 years, Rebecca, their five-year-old son Liam, two-year-old daughter Lorelei. So he's a very busy family man, and what little time he has, he enjoys hunting and fishing and spending time with his family. Matthew is a shining example of what it means to be a NAGS Head Fire Rescue member. He serves our community and citizens with courage, commitment, and compassion. For the Commissioners, it is my pleasure to present to you Captain Matthew Swain.
Wow, congratulations, Matt. You also, hearing all of that, are an exemplary officer for the town of NAGS Head. A great example, you know, the kind of person we really want to have on our, our staff. I wasn't aware of your passion for, for rescue, and I appreciate as someone from a farm family that you're, you're also interested in trained in agricultural rescue. And I know a couple of people who have benefited from that kind of service, and so I would ask if you have anything you'd like to say this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank Chief Wells, yourself, and all the commissioners for the time other day to recognize me, and I look forward to many more years of service to protect the visitors and residents of the town NAGS Head, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, anyone like to say anything?
Thank you for your service, Captain Swain.
Thank you for your service, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you, Matt. We appreciate you very much, and you be safe out there today as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public comment, and I will ask the clerk if she's aware of any public comment that we need to have before us this morning.
No, sir, there's none.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I will, I do want to, I will mention this later. Under the mayor's remarks, we did receive a letter this morning to the commissioners from former Mayor Bob Mauer regarding the event site. And I'd asked that we make that letter part of our record and something that I would like to discuss later under the, under the mayor's agenda. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. You've heard a motion already for the removal of item five from the consent agenda. So two motions, first to approve the consent agenda is modified, and then I will suggest where to place that item. So a motion would be in order to approve the amended consent agenda.
So I move, Mayor, to move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Okay, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so now I'll, I'll ask Commissioner Cahoon, do we, do we need additional staff? Do we need the finance officer or someone else to answer questions?
Amy is already on the, I see her name up here already, so yes, just to.
Okay, so I would suggest then that we move this displaced item five to the, to our next item of business, if we may, and Commissioner Cahoon, I'll turn back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. After reading the engagement letter and the contract, I'd like to add a couple of things. I don't think the contract was fulfilled this year as it relates to receiving written documents of the audit. I think Amy had to do that herself the day before, and it plainly calls for the auditor to do that. So in item 12 of the contract, where it says that the auditor shall submit to the governing board a written report, I'd like to add the terms, no later than six days before the audit presentation.
Okay, thank you. I think that that, that would be appropriate.
And I thank Amy for all the work that she had to do to get it to us, but I think we need more time to review it than the day before, so. But thank you, Amy, for all the work that you did.
Commissioner, was there more? Were there other items?
No, that was the main one. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, then I would suggest that we actually modify, take the motion to modify that contract to add that, that report six days prior.
Mayor, I make a motion to modify the audit contract in item 12, that the auditor shall submit to the governing board a written report of the audit no later than six days before the audit presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, and Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Cahoon, for your attention to that, that item. The next item on our agenda would be public hearings, and this is a continuance from the February 3rd board meeting, and I will turn this over to Attorney Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will resume the public hearing regarding the proposed text amendments to the UDO that would pertain to non-conforming hotels and accessory uses in association with pre-existing fishing piers. On this matter, we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis of the information that's been provided previously, and any supplemental information provided by the Director of Planning and Development, Michael Zane.
Good morning. It was my understanding from the board's previous meetings that the board intended to continue this public hearing until the meeting on April 7th, to be heard in conjunction with the alternative text amendment pertaining to hotels in the CR district.
Okay, all right, thank you, Michael. Does that continue to be the board's wish that this item be continued to be heard in conjunction with the alternative ordinance at our next regular meeting? If so, then I believe a motion to continue would be in order.
So I move.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any question?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the motion that's been made is to continue it until that date certain, April 7th, the board's meeting in April.
Yes.
That was my motion.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the board?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff. Next item on our agenda is item G, reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director, and we'll continue with Director Zane.
Thank you. Happy to take any questions that the board may have, but I did want to go over a couple of things. We did receive at least preliminary confirmation that our community rating system, our CRS class rating, related to our flood program, that our class rating will actually change to a class five, and there are currently, I believe, only four existing class five communities in North Carolina. We expect to join that group along with Manio and Kill Devil Hills. But that change from class six to class five annually will result in approximately $112,000 in savings in premiums, totaling total premiums for all property owners that pay for flood insurance in town. So by the time we will have our next audit, it will have saved policyholders over half a million dollars. And so I definitely want to give a lot of kudos to Holly White for shepherding that process to all the staff, but also, you know, to the board as well, because a lot of the scoring was the result of provision and code changes that allow us to gain points that we were not able to gain formally. So I think this is really important, and we expect the new rates, or property owners should expect the new rates to go into effect April 1st of 2022, so next year. So that's something to look forward to. We are continuing to work with vendors to seek out a level-two charger under a host-type agreement, and hopefully we'll get some information to present back to the board in the near future on that. We have related to that, probably would need to make some changes to our regulations about level-two chargers or chargers to be able to use those on town property. Also, we've been contacted by some private entities that may need to do the same or have an interest in doing the same. So if the board is agreeable to it, we'd like to begin working on a text amendment with the planning board at their March meeting to look at tweaking those provisions to allow for level-two chargers or vehicle chargers to be at least able to be deployed in the community, maybe more than they currently can be under the regulations. And then beyond that, yes?
No, I was, I was going to, to ask if there was any objection to, to the board to proceeding with that. That would certainly seem to be something that we would want to do. Hearing no objection, then, then yes, Michael, it seems appropriate that you would pursue that.
Thank you. Outdoor lighting, we, we plan to come back. Obviously, it was on your consent agenda. We'll be back to you April 7th meeting to go over some amendments there, but we, we were contacted by Dominion about beginning the process to convert the town's streetlights to LED. There are limited specs or limited fixture types that we can select from, and what we've asked them to do, because I believe there's 300 and some, 300-plus streetlights in town, and apparently 14 of them have been converted to LED already. We've asked them for those locations. They've given us some of those locations so that we can start to understand or look at those and determine which may be more appropriate than others in terms of those fixture types. And I expect we'll bring something to the board about that before everything is settled with them. I think beyond that, a decentralized wastewater management plan, we're beginning to work on that. We've had an initial staff kickoff meeting with the consultant, and I believe next week or the following week, we should have a kickoff meeting with the steering committee. And then we also applied for an additional grant, or actually two, more technical assistance. One of them is with the Energy Transitions Initiative Partnership Project. That's through the Department of Energy and the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. This is something that George Wood made us aware of, excuse me, not George Wood, name's escaping me, but it was a project associated with Jeanette's Pier, and they made us aware of this grant opportunity. And basically, we're looking at making the community more resilient with respect to renewables and the impact associated with hazards, and also looking at energy efficiency as well. And related to that, we're looking at a technical assistance opportunity for, with the American Institute of Architects, North Carolina Chapter, to come up with some best practices for building design related to renewable energy and energy efficiency and water efficiency. So we hope those two opportunities relate to one another, and we hope to hear something back positive in the near future.
Okay, a couple of things. I want to thank you for pursuing those grant opportunities. I think potentially we can get some good benefit out of, out of that, a little bit of synergy putting those two grant opportunities together. So thanks to you and staff for pursuing that. Thanks also to you and staff for working on the, the flood rating. Yeah, I know that sometimes it's painful when we have to enforce these flood regulations. People don't really understand quite why we're, why we're so attentive to those issues, but it's, it's partly so that we can succeed in these audits and, and improve ratings and save people money. And I, I hope that we will trumpet that benefit that's being gained to our, to our citizens. The last thing I'll ask is about those lighting locations. I'd love to see those. I suspect other commissioners may like to see those. I'm really concerned, given, given what we've seen with what changing to LED sources can, can do visually. I appreciate the fact that staff is, is paying attention to that. You know, I, I think for our benefit, it would also be helpful for commissioners to see some of those. So if you could share some of those locations with us, that would be great.
Yes, sir. We, we had actually asked them whether or not they would be open to piloting a temporary replacement where they may look at two or three streets and replace the fixtures with one type along each street so that people could get a perspective about, you know, the fixtures and the difference between them. We haven't heard back from them yet. I think they would prefer to point us to the fixtures as they've been replaced in the community, and maybe that will provide enough information, but we can, you know, once, let's look, we'll look at them, see, ensure that we have enough information in terms of the fixture types, and then present something to the board to get you all up to speed.
Commissioner Cahoon?
I was going to say that I, Dominion replaced one of the streetlights that I pay for with LEDs. If anybody would like to take a look at it at night, it's up at the end of my driveway. It's not as intrusive as, as intrusive as the other one, I don't think, but if you'd like to come look at it at night, you're welcome to.
Okay, thank you for that. I would like to do that.
May I ask the planning director a question?
Sure, of course.
On the CRS rating sheet, activity 340 hazard disclosures, it talks about requiring notice disclosure of flood hazards. What does that entail? Does that include storm flooding? Or does it include nuisance flooding, such as, we had a street recently that we know that one of the homeowners was complaining about the flooding, and that appears to be one of those that is repetitive? Or is that required to be disclosed?
Yeah, apologies. I'm just going to read it very quickly. You know, I'd have to dive in and determine exactly what that activity entails. I, I, reading just the, the synopsis, the summary, I'm, I'm not sure if that's just not a notification requirement, but I'll get, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, did you have your hand up, or were you making an adjustment?
An adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Anything else, Michael?
No, sir. Thank you all.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do, did want to ask one more thing, and I realize it's connected to one of our later items of business about Fresh Pond. Has the, it was on the calendars. The study should have kicked off on the Public Works project?
It, it has. I, I would defer to Andy Garman on that, but we, I've been involved at least in looking at the regulatory impacts to Public Works properties.
Okay, all right, thank you. Andy, anything to offer on the status of that?
Yes, the consultant conducted interviews onsite with all the Public Works staff and the divisions, and they've prepared a report on the findings. It's called the initial investigation, and essentially describes the existing conditions of Public Works, sort of the deficiencies in the facilities that staff have identified, and also potential for future staffing, sort of a forecast, basically an estimate of staffing by, by the staff. And, you know, I mean, that's something that would require future discussion by the board, obviously, but, but for now, you know, they're being conservative and trying to project what, what their, you know, possible future space needs might be in order to feed into the conceptual designs. We have a meeting this Friday with the staff and the architect to follow up on the initial investigations, and then that would lead into conceptual development. And beyond that, as Michael mentioned, we had a separate meeting with planning staff and the town engineer and the architect to review the regulations that affect the development of the sites. And one of the, one of the discussions was Fresh Pond, but obviously also our planning and zoning regulations and other state regulations.
All right, very good. Thank you. I mainly wanted to make sure that that ball was rolling, even though we have the, the Fresh Pond issues to deal with. Still, that assessment of conditions, what we, what we need in terms of public works facilities is, is important. So thank you.
Sure.
Right, thank you. The next item on our agenda then would be old business items from the previous meetings, and that would be the discussion of the Fresh Pond, so Andy will let you keep going.
Okay, well, great. Well, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So in previous meetings, when we sort of kicked off this Public Works master planning project, we mentioned to the board, and the board also brought this up, a discussion about the Fresh Pond area of environmental concern, since most of the properties, actually all of the properties are affected by this over off of Lark Avenue. You've got the water plant, you've got two properties where the main Public Works facility is located, and also the bulk site. And all of those are within the 1,200-foot buffer of the Fresh Pond, and then portions of those are within 500 feet of the Fresh Pond. And so as the board is aware, we have state regulations that were created, I think in the 70s, to preserve the, the Fresh Pond watershed and water supply. And those exist, are still in existence. Obviously, the, the water supply is no, no longer being provided by the town. That was taken offline several years ago, and the town is currently purchasing all of its water from Dare County. And so we still have a water plant and some of the buildings out there. Questions whether or not we would ever reactivate those facilities, and there's been no plans to do that. As we're aware, we, we believe that the county would have adequate water supply to carry us well into the future, but you never know, you know, when we might need to do something, and so questions sort of speculative as to whether we should continue to keep this in place. We, we've talked with Kill Devil Hills staff, we've talked with Kama staff, and we've talked internally about this, and we sort of looked at this, okay, what's the process to remove the AEC if we feel like that's something we wanted to pursue? This was brought up in light of the project that we're working on. However, staff, after looking at this, believes that there could be a path forward for developing these properties even without removing the AEC. And so the, the regulations basically speak to the density of septic systems that are allowed within the AEC. So if you're between 500 feet and 1,200 feet from the Fresh Pond, it basically states that, you know, you need to have a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, and that the maximum size for a. and that the maximum size for a septic system is 480 gallons per day flow. Within 500 feet of the fresh pond, there's no installation of wastewater systems. And if you're installing any type of development, it cannot be considered a source of pollution. So that's, it's not that you can't put anything within 500 feet of the fresh pond. You just have to consider, you know, how it would impact, you know, as a source of pollution to the water supply. So looking at that, there may be ways to get around both of those with the design of anything we do over there. And I think the biggest limitation is the wastewater limitation. I think, I know most of you are aware of how we've done this in the past. The example that's fresh in my mind is the soccer fields where the dog park is located. So that property is owned by the town, and that was developed by the county for the soccer fields. And that is a 13 acre site. And so the county wanted to put the concession stand and restrooms on that site, and that's within the fresh pond buffer. And so initially, Kama looked at that and said, well, you can't have a septic system of more than 480 gallons per day, and it doesn't necessarily state, you know, that because you have a larger property, you know, it's a ratio, it's simply, they looked at it per lot. So if you were to cut that lot up into 13 one acre properties, you could have 13 480 gallon systems. And so it really didn't make sense from our perspective, if we just wanted to do one 1,000 gallon system, why they wouldn't allow us to do that if that would have been an alternative scenario that would have been approved under a Kama minor permit. So the town basically applied for a variance from the CRC on behalf of the county to put in a 1,000 gallon system. And that was granted. And in talking to Kama staff, there could be a chance that we could apply for a Kama major permit for the development of these properties and that they could consider a ratio or density of septic systems per acre as part of that process, possibly alleviating the need to do or apply for a variance. So we think the worst case scenario would be that we would have to apply for a variance. But, you know, there may be another way to do it through the major permit process. And so when you look at public work site where we have the admin building and the water tower, those are two separate properties. Those total about two acres each, so almost four acres. And that is in the C3 zoning district. And then you have the water plant, which is about four acres, and that is in the SED 80 zoning district. And then you have the bulk site, which is another two and a half acres in the C3. So you know, we think that there would be ways to work through the process with the current AEC regulations in place, knowing that we would have to follow other state regulations, Kama major permitting, possibly stormwater management from the state and other things. So with that said, you know, our feeling is that unless there's really another compelling reason to pursue removing the AEC, which is going to be a lengthy process and complex, that we would probably recommend proceeding by just coming up with the plan that we want and going through the major permitting process and worst case scenario, pursuing a variance rather than trying to go through the process of removing the AEC. So you had some backup in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions, and that's what I have this morning.
Right, thanks, Andy. Before we do questions, I mean, that's a, that sounds like a sensible approach. To me as a, you know, as a consultant, I'd be working for a developer trying to do the same thing. I mean, that's pretty rational. We're also fortunate that calculated wastewater flows from shop and office spaces are also among the lowest ratios that you deal with. And so that helps us as well in terms of the size of septic systems. So I'll ask the commissioners if they have questions or comments regarding this.
This is Webb. I strongly support that approach.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would like to commend Andy and staff for coming up with an alternative to removing the AEC, which I'm not in favor of, but I think that the approach that Andy has outlined makes a lot of sense. It gives us the room to do what we need to do in enlarging public works and reconfiguring it. And also I have yet to see a local government entity really turned down for any variance that they've ever applied for in my term on the commission. If that would have to be the route that we take.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Andy, anything else to offer on that item?
No, I think that's it. I think, you know, it sounds like the board agrees, and so we'll proceed with that approach and bring information back to the board soon on concepts. So thank you for the discussion.
Great. We look forward to seeing those and getting this project moving along. That'll be awesome. The next item on our agenda is new business, and those would be committee reports. And so I'll poll the commissioners as you appear on my screen here. So Commissioner Cahoon, I know we have an item later. Do you have anything else at this point? You're muted.
No, no further committee reports.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Brinkley?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Sears?
Nothing from Stormwater. We're meeting again tomorrow on the Jockeys Ridge Committee.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. We look forward to a report from the Jockeys Ridge Committee as well sometime soon. Commissioner Fuller?
Nothing to report.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I have a couple of items under Mayor's agenda, but nothing from a committee standpoint. So that brings us to curbside recycling, and we will go back to Andy again.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we have several items of business for support of the curbside recycling initiative. We obviously have changes we need to make to our code. One of those changes is to chapter 30 of our code related to establishing an exclusive franchise agreement that would make TFC the sole provider of residential curbside recycling in the town. So we have provided a draft of that agreement to the board in the packet, which basically outlines some of the terms of the franchise. There will be a separate franchise agreement. At a previous meeting, the board authorized the town manager to enter into any agreement with TFC. So this ordinance is sort of running parallel with that. And we will be reviewing that agreement and executing that once the board adopts the franchise ordinance. And so after that, we will be under contract with TFC and ready to pursue all these other items of business that we need to to get it started. So we did have one change to the ordinance that was sent to the board last, yesterday regarding the rate. And so this is something that was requested by TFC. And essentially, they'd like an annual rate review based on an index similar to the Consumer Price Index, where they could account for fuel increases and things like that. I believe you have that language. Other than that, everything else is spelled out in the ordinance. And so with that, I guess maybe would you like to pause and take that one item and then move on to the next?
I believe that that would be appropriate. And let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can have discussion about this franchise ordinance. So is there a motion to approve?
Are you asking a motion to approve what?
The ordinance granting the exclusive franchise to Tide Water Fiber.
Mr. Mayor, I think that needs to be, it needs to be specific to the one that has been presented this morning because there were some revisions last night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion that we approve the ordinance granting an exclusive franchise to Tide Water Fiber Corporation Storm Business as TFC Recyclings, the collection and processing recycling materials for residential units in the town of Nagseth.
Thank you. Kevin, is there a second?
A second then.
Okay, now, now discussion and questions. Does anyone have questions for Andy? Or any other staff? Commissioner Cahoon?
I have one question. In the only item G where it talks about the hours of pickup, summertime hours were from 3:00 AM to noon, and the off-season hours were from 5:00 to 1:00. Is that the appropriate amount of time in the off-season to change from nine hours to six hours?
Yes, we felt like it was, and we you know, we're, those are the times when we're picking up, and so we wanted them to try to run along with our crews. Because as you know, we're doing rollback services, and those rollback people have to get in here at a certain time. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, they're also able to roll back the recycling carts as well. So that's why we picked the times that we did.
Thank you very much.
Other commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none, and we have a motion on the floor to approve the franchise ordinance as Commissioner Brinkley fully addressed it. So hearing no further comment, I'll ask Madam Clerk if you'll please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Thank you. All right, Andy, what is the next part for us to?
Okay, so the next part is another ordinance amendment. As you know, the chapter 30 also covers the requirements for containers. And when we had, when we came up with the townwide recycling program in 2016, we amended this section to require not only a certain number of trash carts for seasonal rental units, but also a certain number of recycling carts. And since this program would be a voluntary program, we feel like we needed to revise this to be more similar to how it was prior to the recycling program. And so you see in the amendment, we're only requiring one trash cart for every two bedrooms. And if you're not a seasonal rental unit, you just are simply required to have one trash cart. So I think the board is very familiar with this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. There's one other housekeeping item in here. We had a requirement to roll carts back to the property off the street at a certain time. There was also a requirement that carts couldn't be placed out more than a certain amount of time prior to the collection. We have removed that provision or suggested that we remove that provision. The provision that did you roll back, the day of collection is still in there. We felt like this other provision has been problematic, especially with the changeover typically occurring on Saturdays, and most of the carts aren't out or placed out and not collected until Monday. This alleviates a practical issue for the town while still giving us some enforcement for carts that are left out all the time. So we recommend this change, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that as well.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, questions for Andy?
Mayor, this is Webb.
Yes, sir.
I certainly appreciate the last thing you're talking about. I'm glad that's in there, but for the other board members and staff, I think we should expect some pushback on that just to recognition, but I want to say right now, I support this. But I have a feeling we'll have a group of people that'll say that people shouldn't be able to push their carts out anytime they want.
Understood and expected as well. Other commissioners? Hearing none, then did we have a, do we have a motion on the floor on this? Or we, we don't? No. Then a motion would be in order to amend town code chapter 30 as we just heard it presented.
I moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, thank you. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Andy, we have one more piece to this, I believe.
Okay, so we have a couple of things here. The first item we'd like to talk to the board about is the collection schedule. Over the years, we've had a lot of discussion about the collection schedule. It's a hard thing to get completely right. We've come up with a suggestion for the board to consider. Obviously, since we're going to a subscription recycling program, that changes the services. And so a lot of folks, when we had, prior to having a townwide service for recycling, we had a two-day-a-week collection minimum for most places in town. When we did the curbside townwide recycling, we basically took away one of the days of trash collection for most folks and substituted it for a day of recycling collection. So now that we might, we will be only providing recycling on a subscription basis. We feel like we need to go back to that schedule just to provide the same level of capacity for folks in town. So what we're suggesting is a schedule that would be maintained year-round. It wouldn't change. It would be two days a week for all areas of town. And we've also made an adjustment to the routes. And I can just go through that real quick. So you would have two routes, the blue route and the green route. It, we used to use east and west, but we have made one significant change to the routes, which would make that no longer intuitive. The green route would now would now include the Cove and the northern area between the highways. Formerly, that was called the red route. And we did that to provide those areas with two days of collection, and the green route would only receive one day of collection. So now all those areas would receive the two days of collection on the same day, which would be suggested as Tuesday and Friday. And this is what the West Side neighborhoods were collected prior to the townwide recycling program. And so now you have the blue route, which was historically the east route, the Beach Road and South Nagseth. And what we're suggesting for that is Monday and Thursday. And we would also be adding the west side of the Village of Nagseth into the blue route. And Mike Norris has spent quite a bit of time looking at the breakdown of the routes and the number of stops. And we're suggesting that for a couple of reasons. One is to sort of even out the routes so that the trucks are operating efficiently and providing the same number of stops for each driver. And from a practical standpoint, you know, the Village of Nagseth is a very organized HOA, and they do provide services for their residents. In some cases, they provide rollback service. And in order to assist them doing that, which is something that we certainly appreciate, putting them all on the same schedule makes a lot of sense because if they're doing rollback, they can just simply contract it for the same days. And so it helps us accomplish our goal of evening out the routes. It helps them operate more efficiently as an HOA. So we're suggesting that and would be happy to answer any questions about the schedule or the routes. And Mike Norris is on the call as well, and he can certainly answer questions. He mainly came up with this, and I know he's got some other goals that he's trying to accomplish, so both of us will be there.
Well, I'll ask Mike first if there's anything you'd like to add to the discussion before we throw it open to questions from commissioners.
No, not at this time, other than just we've spent an awful lot of time collecting data and reviewing everything over the past year to come up with these suggestions. It's been a complete effort of all of the sanitation and even including Andy and other staff members. And I believe it will accomplish what needs to be done for everybody to come out and to be happy. So I'm anxious to hear what some of the questions are. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear what some of the questions are, to be honest with you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So commissioners, I'll, I'll ask Commissioner Fuller, can I ask you first? You're familiar with maybe more than all of us with operations at the village and, and the, the nature of that beast. What are your thoughts about this collection plan?
Are you talking about specific to the village or overall?
Well, overall.
Um, actually, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of everything. I just had one extremely strange question, which is at the extreme northern part of the town, there are north of Bonnet Street, there are like six or seven lots that, but Memorial that are blue. And my question is, I can't see it in detail enough, but I, I can only make the assumption that those are lots that run from the Beach Road to Memorial. Um, but I don't know if y'all can see it or not, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, about 10 lots north of Bonnet Street that touch Memorial. And the question is, are they to be picked up on Memorial or on the Beach Road? Am I making sense to anybody?
Yes. When we, when we mapped that, you know, obviously those, you're, you're exactly right. Those lots had frontage on Memorial and the Beach Road. I'm not sure if Mike is familiar with those in terms of where the driveways are and whether the driveways front Memorial or the Beach Road. But they were put on the blue route because they fronted the Beach Road.
So if the driveway, if the driveway and the front door of the house were faced towards Beach Road, they would be, it would be on the blue route. If they face the side street, they would be on the side street route. They would be on the, the green.
Okay, great. Okay, no, no, I, I, I think, um, to me, it makes a lot of sense. I totally agree about, we'll never have a perfect system. But as far as I'm concerned, I think we're getting to where we need to be. And who knows? I read something this morning about plastic is getting ready to be recyclable again. So we could be sitting here in a year going, why aren't we doing plastic? I don't know. But you know, this is in a response to the market and we have to follow the market. And I trust staff to have worked this out the best possible way. And I thank Mike and Andy for presenting it to us, specific to the village. Accommodating the village helps. It helps a whole lot. We tend to get some specific complaints from the village if we're not trying to help. Uh, so I'd like to eliminate any sort of conflict we can have in the village.
Well, without regard to whether it's the village or, or not, a, a single entity there that does bridge from ocean to sound that includes a lot of rental units on both sides. Putting them together does make some sense to me. And I also trust that staff has, has studied that, considered, you know, what they can do with, with collection. So Commissioner Sears, any thoughts about this?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Mike and Andy and everybody else that worked on it. The, the only concern I have is rental companies tell their guests when they leave to pull the carts out to the street. That's been a big concern of Commissioner Fuller for the last three years of our appearance and trash blowing around. How are we going to relate the new schedule and the new pickup schedule to each one of these rental companies? So they can change everything they need to change so that, you know, trash is picked up on Thursday. It doesn't need to go back out till Monday. And I know that, that's going to help the cleaners get out of the house a little faster. But at the same time, we don't want that confusion and the complaints of trash and trash cans being all over the Beach Road during those time periods. So that would be the only question I would have about it. Otherwise, I think it's, it's great.
Thank you. Mike or Andy, a response to that?
Well, I mean, I think that we've been talking internally about a, a pretty strong educational campaign. I think Mayor used the word campaign in a previous meeting. And so, you know, obviously we have to hit it hard in the beginning because we're trying to recruit subscribers to the program. And we plan to work with TFC. They have a dedicated person that does educational programs for recycling. So we're going to be obviously trying to elicit subscribers. We're going to be trying to communicate the new schedules. We're going to be sticker-ing the carts. And I, I think part of the, the push for the subscription will be to the rental companies, not only to communicate the new schedule, but to ask them to help us gain subscribers and reach out to their folks. And so we'll be doing all of those things and, you know, it, it's a lot to take on, but, you know, we'll, we'll try to hit it from every angle that we can.
I would also point out, I mean, we're meeting weekly on this. We have a whole group and a team that have identified most of these items. I mean, we have Karen working on our end in Public Works and then even working through Roberta. And all, all these items have been identified. We have a two-page identification list of stuff we're working through that has been assigned to everybody. So we're definitely aware of that and, and will continue to work on it. Again, we're meeting weekly on this now throughout until this is completed, this whole thing. It's, it's a, it's a bigger undertaking.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Commissioner Sears asking the question that he did. And it certainly sounds like Mike Norris, Karen, Andy and the other staff that's been working on it has certainly done a, a good job. And I trust the, the, the studies and the data that they've analyzed, that they're making the best recommendation. I agree with the routes. I agree with what's been presented. I do hope that we've got a schedule now that we can stay with and that we don't change ever a couple of years. It seems like it's, it's crazy how our, how our schedules have changed so much through the years. And I know that's got to be cumbersome for staff. So I appreciate the work that's been done and hopefully that we've got something now that's going to work as efficiently as possible. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
Um, thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the work that everybody's done. I do have some concerns about the Beach Road or the Blue Route. The Blue Route has gone from three days of service to two days of service. It's gone from Monday, Wednesday, Saturday to Monday, Friday. And now you're talking about taking it to Monday, Thursday. I think that's going to create an awful lot more chaos for the rental companies and the renters because you're going to have trash maybe rolled out on Wednesday to picked up on Thursday. If they don't roll it out, it won't be picked up again until the following Monday. And I can just see a whole lot more trash on the Beach Road than what we're used to having a Monday, Thursday versus even a Monday, Friday. The renters have somewhat gotten used to rolling it out to be picked up on Friday. And asking them to go back another day. I just think we're going to have an awful lot more trash out there that we're going to have to be dealing with the problems. I mean, I was, I believe the blue, green route has a Monday, Friday. Is that right? Is that what, Tuesday, Friday, I think I heard. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the, the residents are keeping them Tuesday, Friday, but the Beach Road that has, I think the bulk of the trash is going to Monday, Thursday. I think we're letting ourselves in for an awful lot of problems just from what I can see in my neighborhood already with Monday, Friday. And I think moving it to Thursday, you're, you're talking houses that have four and five cans that probably won't get emptied on Thursday. And so they're going to be full again until Monday. And that's changeover for two days. Right now, people are getting it pretty well out. I think the education process is going to be really difficult at best. So I'm just, I'm just really concerned about what happens on the blue route.
Thank you. Staff, any comments? I know, I know you've probably kicked this concern around and, and any thoughts to share about that? How, how, how that arrived and how we might, I, I know the, I agree with Commissioner Cahoon. The education part of that's going to be really, really critical.
Well, I'll, I'll start off and maybe Mike can chime in a little bit. The, you know, Commissioner Cahoon is right. We had three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Saturday in the summertime prior to the townwide recycling program. We went to two days a week. We changed that schedule a little bit. You know, it was Tuesday, Saturday, and then I think it went to Monday, Friday. And now we're talking about going from Monday, Friday to Monday, Thursday. You know, in order to have two days on the west side on the green route, you know, you have to look at spacing those days out. You know, you don't want the collections back to back, Tuesday, Friday and Monday, Thursday allows us to do that. In looking at the volumes of trash, you know, Mike can probably, I'll let Mike speak to that in a second. Beyond that, you know, the only other thing that I think is working well that will help us and, and Commissioner Cahoon is right. We need to do a lot of education to get this right. But we did a contracted service last year for rollback and that tended to work really well. And so that may help alleviate some of the issues. The other thing I'll say about the Saturday collection, and this is kind of how we looked at Thursday versus Friday, is when, when we had Saturday collections, our volumes were pretty light. And most of the time, those collections are occurring before any carts hit the street from the housekeepers. Because, you know, they're coming around noon and, and the collections occurring from 3:00 AM to 8:00 AM. So most of the carts that are rolled out on Saturday aren't being collected by our forces. And that tends to be a very light day. So Mike, maybe you want to speak to the volumes a little bit?
Just to back up what you said, that's correct. Um, I tracked, like I said, all last year with the twice-a-week pickup. Um, that's all I had to go by. I didn't have data on the three days a week. So the Saturday pickups were extremely low and that was what really, that's how I did it. I took those weights and added them to the Monday and you are correct. It isn't something that we, again, we are aware of, but I felt like, and we felt like as a group, that it, it just wasn't beneficial to run it due to the weights. They were extremely low. The guys were getting done in a couple of hours, two, three hours. And again, the volume of trash we felt could carry over to Monday. We do have some contingency plans that we've already thought about because we are aware of these situations. Um, again, this was presented as what we thought would be the best way to move forward, to, to cover the whole town. Um, other than that, I, I don't really have a lot, I don't really have a lot more to offer. Um, again, other than we are aware of the situation.
Commissioner Cahoon?
The Saturday pickups, if I'm not mistaken, were on the west side?
Correct.
Okay, so that wasn't your high-volume areas. That was your, so I understand that. I understand doing away with that. But you're taking your highest volume area, which is the ocean side, and putting it on another shorter schedule.
Mike, do you know the difference between the volumes on, on Monday versus Friday?
I don't have it in my fingertips, but yeah. I'd have to look them up. I could follow up on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, thank you.
All right. Um, Andy, is this, uh, this route plan something that we need to go ahead and try to approve at this point? Or is this for air information?
Well, you know, we didn't want to move forward without any, any board approval, obviously. And, you know, it affects our ability to educate folks. If, if we can move forward with routes and schedules, then we can start the education process. And we need to be working in conjunction with TFC to do that. The, the other factor here is the commercial schedule. And a three-day-a-week schedule for the Beach Road affects the commercial schedule as well. So if, if that's something the board wants to consider, we're going to have to go back and sort of take another look at that. You know, but based on, based on volumes and, and things like that, you know, I, I understand the concern about changing the schedule going from Friday to Thursday. And, you know, that, that is an educational challenge and we totally recognize that. And, you know, the only thing I could say about that is that if we can maintain some consistency over time, then that whole problem will hopefully resolve itself the longer we can keep that in place.
All right, thank you.
I'm trying to wait.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fuller.
Um, you know, when, when I said what I said, I'm glad Commissioner Sears brought back up. My overall concern is aesthetics and the look and the invitation that we present to the guests coming in. And I understand there's no perfect schedule. But I was hoping that in the contingencies that staff had built in, that they will be able to respond on a case-by-case basis to any issues that we have that Commissioner Cahoon brought up. Um, you know, the, no matter which days you choose, there's going to be problems. The answer always lies in Sunday pickup. And we know we don't have that as an answer. So we've got to back up. And here again, when we pick up on Saturdays, we're not picking up Saturday garbage. We're picking up Friday garbage. So I already understand those concerns that we have built in. But I hope the contingencies that staff recognizes is we might have to do something that is not on, on the formal schedule. And that's, I'm, I'm just reiterating that. Uh, and I hope that staff, you know, staff said that and I just want to reemphasize that, that those contingencies are as important as the general plan.
And, and I think we, we have discussed that and Mike, maybe we can speak to that a little bit in terms of when we have people here and how that benefits us.
So, yeah, another, and if I could go back, you're right, I made a mistake on the days and I apologize. But going back to Saturday, um, we, we were picking up on Friday. I just want to run through it real quick. And so another thing I did, I'm just looking through my last year's data. I was counting how many we're putting out late after we finished on Saturday. Because what we were doing was, again, a contingency, we were going back through and doing a pass to clean up on our way in. And there was an average of 250 carts out after we already made the pass, when I would go back out and count after 11 o'clock on Saturday. So again, a lot of education is going to be, need to be made. You're right. And, and again, it's something we're aware of. And then going on to the schedule change, we still would have somebody here talking about contingencies. We would still have staff members working on Saturday. So again, we're prepared that if it's a, a complete disaster, that we would run a truck through there and clean up on Saturday. We are prepared to do that.
And, and that's what I thought and I, and I agree with that.
Question?
Commissioner?
The pass-through that you're talking about on Saturdays, was that the Beach Road or the west side?
That is the east side of Beach Road from McCall Court to 8th Street. What we would do is have them leave the landfill and on their way in, we'd have them just go ahead and come that way. Break two trucks up and one would come that way and one would go that way. That's what we were doing on Saturdays. I'm sorry.
That was when we had a Friday pickup, correct?
That is correct.
So what happens now that we have a Thursday pickup? When's your pass-through coming through? I can't hear you, Mike. You're muted.
I apologize. Our pass-through would now be on Friday.
Okay. And Andy, I heard you mention commercial. Are you proposing changes to commercial?
No, we're not. And so I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would be doing commercial Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Saturday. So the commercial crews would still be here on Saturday in case we have a, an issue. We have staff here on the ground that, that can deal with it.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
We did discuss that. We discussed the commercial routes and we debated about doing that and we decided to keep it the same.
I started saying commercials already lost one day of service. Be careful.
We, we figured too much change is maybe not a good thing, so.
All right, very, very good. Thank you. I appreciate staff, staff's apparent thoughtfulness for all of this. I know that y'all have been through this wringer plenty of times and, and y'all, as much as anybody, more than anybody, maybe more than the residents, more than us, really want this to, to work and settle down. So I, I appreciate the, the thought y'all are, are giving to this. So then I would suggest for staffs benefit for their planning and working with tidewater fiber that we should put a motion on the floor to approve the, the proposed route, understanding that they have contingency plans for, for things that go with strata.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Thank you. Um, I suspect we're going to spend a little bit of time. I suspect we're going to spend a little bit of time on the beach nourishment, the, the service district discussion. We're, we're on a good schedule here.
May I?
Reasonable time. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. There was one more thing we wanted to discuss with the board about the recycling program.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
So one of the items that we're going to be dealing with, with the recycling program is the, the blue carts. And so the blue carts are intended to be used for recycling and not trash. We last year allowed those to be used for trash temporarily when we suspended the program. But now that we're moving towards a more permanent solution, we need to make people aware that the blue carts can no longer be used for trash. And since we have a lot of blue carts out there, we feel like that the best approach is to collect the blue carts in order to be able to control what they're used for, since there's about 5, 500 out there. So we would plan to go through a, a process to collect the carts and let people know what we're doing, do it in a systematic way, asking people to put the carts out for the collection and then leave the blue carts out so we can come by and collect them. We were going to go through the town and try to do that. The, the one issue that comes up with that is folks' understanding of whether they own the carts or not. And when we rolled out the program for recycling, we purchased roughly 4,400 carts and those were provided for free to the residents in order to participate in the program. And so, you know, our, our first response to a question from a property owner is, well, if you participate in the subscription program, you will continue to be able to use the cart for free. But you know, we don't want to leave the carts in place because folks who come at the residence don't always know, you know, that they're not able to use the card and they're, they don't always know whether the house is in a subscription. So obviously there are some folks that paid a fee to use the carts. And so we know we're going to get questions about that. And what our, our suggestion would be is to simply let folks know what we're doing and let them know if they paid a fee for a blue cart to contact the town to inquire about a refund. And so that, that's something that we would suggest. We know that has an implication for the budget. We may need to bring the board, back to the board, a budget amendment to allow for that to occur. There's about 1,200 carts that were paid for. So this approach would allow people to, to request a refund. Obviously, you know, they're, they, they will be told, you know, if you, if you participate in the subscription program, you will be provided as many carts as you want for free. But if they insist on a refund, then that's what we would tell them, that they could, they could get a refund. So we feel like the board needs to be aware of that. And we wanted to give the board an opportunity to comment on that. We feel like that's a, a simple, practical approach to dealing with the issue. And we'd like some feedback from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, comments on that approach?
Just out of curiosity, what, what, how much is a cart when we sold it to those 1,200, I think you said?
They, the price I think varied, but it was north of $70.
Karen, do you have the price on those?
Yes, it's been $80.07. That includes tax.
Now, I think we adjusted the price since 2016. And so there may have been multiple prices that were paid and we could go back and verify that. But yes, Karen's right. That's what it is currently.
$80.70, is that what you said?
$80.07. And that's as for the records that go back as far as when we started selling additional ones.
I have a question. I just want to make sure. Maybe I don't want to get too hung up on this, but Andy used the words, when we provided the carts. And I have said that I believe I was told that I was given the cart. If I'm, if I've been given something, then that means it's mine. If I was provided it for use, that doesn't necessarily mean it's mine. And I just want to make sure that if we provided it, that we provided it with the understanding that it's for your use. If we gave it, then I want to make sure that we understand when we ask people to put their blue card out, we're asking them to give it back to us. I don't want to mislead anybody about what we did or what we're asking.
Thank you. Andy, my, you know, I, I don't know what terminology was, was used officially when we did that. I mean, when we provide a cart to somebody for a service, it seems, and then we're not charging them for it. I, I can easily construe that we're providing that for service. And if it, if it's a recycling cart and there's not recycling being picked up, then it doesn't have a use and, and so can be returned. But you know, perhaps we just clarify when we, when we're, and be more careful with our terminology, at least when we're picking it up, to say since they're no longer being used, please don't say we want you to give it back. Just say the service is no longer being provided and those carts are being collected, have to be collected.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, any other response from you, Andy, on that?
No, no, I don't think so. I, I understand.
Other commissioners?
I, I would just say Andy and I have had this discussion. He's done a lot of research on it. It's very clear back in the nineties, when we went to the cart system, that the carts were owned by the town and there was a user fee associated with the cart. And in fact, people went out and also bought carts. And even if they bought carts, we repaired them. And I'm not sure that we can dig down into the records to find out if the blue carts were given or were provided for a service or not. So I just want us to be very careful with, you know, the fact, you use right terminology. I think most people are going to comply. That's not it. But I, I don't want to get into any sort of contest where you gave me the cart and now you're taking it back. And I didn't know that you were taking it back. I pushed out to the street and you just took it.
And I, I mean, I totally understand what Commissioner Fuller is saying. And you know, when you're going around trying to collect, you know, 5,000 plus carts, you know, we really don't have the ability to, to get into any kind of confrontation with folks about the card. If, if they're insisting that they're not going to give the card up, we're probably not going to get the cart back. But you know, I mean, the, the idea is that, you know, they, they roll it out and they comply. And hopefully we can limit the number of blue carts that make it to the street so that the contractor can do, do their jobs. You know, we know there's going to be carts that get rolled out that aren't on the subscription that we're probably initially going to have to pick up because we don't want them to just sit out there. But it'll be a work in progress and we're going to have to be making some adjustments as we see, see how it goes. And we're prepared to do that.
And I, I just going to say, it's, it's just not going to be easy as it sounds. I understand that. We're going to, the board will probably get some phone calls, but just as a matter of course, you can have my blue cart that you gave me.
Very generous of you. Thank you. Yes, yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
Don't we have the records of who bought, who purchased blue carts? Don't we?
Yes, we do.
Finances?
We do.
So we would know who would, if they wanted a refund, would deserve a refund?
We, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Okay, well, the, the, if that's the suggested approach, we're likely going to end up with a budget amendment back to the board at another meeting. And so just so the board understands that. The last thing I will say, you know, the board was obviously very generous in providing the subsidy to encourage people to subscribe. Staff has been meeting about this, as Mike said. And you know, we were sort of thinking about different ways to encourage people to sign up. Obviously, there's a big push to get people signed up before May. And so we were wondering if the board would consider another incentive to get people to sign up. We're just throwing this out there. But if we offered to pay for the subscription for the first two months for anybody that signed up before May 1, we calculated that 400 subscribers would be $5,600. That, that's a suggestion. Obviously, we could do a number of different things, but we just wanted to, to put that out there and see if the board wanted to entertain that.
I'm sorry, Andy. So the, you're suggesting that one month would be paid for?
Well, one or two months, two months would be $5,600 for 400 subscribers. So you know, that's, we're trying to get to that number by May 1. And so that was, that was a suggestion that was thrown out.
Andy, have you looked at reaching out to the rental companies to have them send out something to their owners to, to subscribe?
We're definitely going to do that. We are definitely doing that. We need their help to try to reach out to all their folks.
What's your deadline for sending that out? Because people are going to start having rentals, so I think sooner rather than later. So what are you going to reach out and have it sent out?
It's going to be as soon as possible. I mean, basically, everything was, it was being held for this meeting. And once we got out of this meeting, we all agreed that all of this can move forward. The education program, the cart collections, stickering, everything was, was riding on, on all the decisions coming out of this meeting. So we'll reach out ASAP.
Andy, am I correct in saying that, that the contract, TFC contract requires at least 440 subscribers?
Yes, that was what was in their bid. And we, we are going to be adding some stops to that as well. And so we're trying to get to that number just so the program can begin to limit the, the amount of confusion if it doesn't start in May, in May. So.
And where, where are we at with numbers? I may have asked that at our last meeting, but where people have signed up.
Well, we're, we're at about 210 now. And then we can probably add about 50 stops to that from town stops. And so if, if we can get another 100 plus, then I think we'll be, we'll be close to starting. You know, the, the bid said 440. We've had discussions with the contractor about that. You know, if it comes May 1 and we've got 390, you know, they're, they're not going to refuse to start. It's when we get to May 1 and they've only got 250 that it's going to be an issue. So we think we can get there, but you know, we just need to, to push as hard as we can to let people know if it's happening and, and encourage them to do it.
And one last question. Have we had since the board approved at the last meeting, the subscription service and offered the, us paying part of the, part of the fee? Have we seen an increase in signups? Or can you tell me the number of signups that we've had since that meeting?
We've only had about 10 since that meeting. We haven't advertised it that heavily. We, we still, we're still, we still have to sign a contract with TFC. And so this first step was to pass the ordinance. Now we have a draft contract that everybody's reviewed that we think is ready to go. And so we, we put all that in place and then we're really, we feel comfortable that we can go forward and do all this. But we, we had to have the security of that contract signed in order to be able to move forward. There's a lot of moving parts and so that, that was one of those.
Well, I, I understand people not, you know, needing a contract for people to really sign up. I will say that people who have approached me in the community seem positive. The, the response to me was actually surprisingly positive. That folks seemed enthused about doing this. So, you know, board, what, what are, what are your thoughts about what Andy has suggested? I mean, we, we want this to succeed. But this is a, this is a new expenditure that we hadn't thought about.
Mayor, I would, I agree with the sub, I mean, with the subsidy that we voted on last month. I'm not prepared to go for the suggestion that was made today. I think we need to see how it works. And I think if we advertise what we're doing, which we have not done, I think if we advertise the service and the subsidy, I think we'll get more signups because people are enthused about it. But I think just arbitrarily deciding to pay, you're creating something that people are going to have an expectation of continuing.
Okay, understood. Commissioner Brinkley?
I fully agree with what Commissioner Cahoon said. I'm, I'm not prepared at this point to offer anything else. We, we, we did the subsidy. I think we need to do an aggressive campaign and I understand Andy, you know, the timeframe that they're working under. But let's try to aggressively put out what we've offered. People I've talked to have been excited and I've also confirmed with them that they have signed up. But I, I don't think we need to offer anything else. It's almost like we're begging them to, to, to do this. If they want to do it, they need to do it and let's go.
All right, good. Commissioner Sears?
I, I would agree with both previous commissioners on that. I think advertising.
Commissioner Fuller?
I have nothing to add. I totally agree with the other commissioners.
Okay. All right. All right. Then let's, let's just push it. And has there any other business then, Andy, to be considered on this item?
No, I appreciate all the, all the discussion. We hit you with a lot and thank you for your thoughtful comments.
Yes. All right. I really, we really do appreciate the work staff has done on all of this. This is, you know, it, it's always an issue and we're always hopeful that we've achieved the final solution, but we, we shall see. It is 10:26 and a half. I would suggest a 10 minute recess for a coffee break and that we return here at, oh, let's say 10:35. Okay. All right. I see all of the commissioners at least, so. We're, we're, we're back to order and the next item on our agenda would be items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. Mr. Lighty?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present today.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Then the next item on our agenda would be items to, referred to and presentation from the town manager. Greg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So you have the report on the establishment of the four proposed municipal service districts. And item identifies those four districts, their districts three, four, five and six. Obviously, in the last month and a half, we've spent a, I think, a great deal of time going over these proposed districts and the proposed project and understate. And then also it shows the two existing municipal service districts. Goes into the information on the previous projects that have been done and what's proposed in the future. I don't know if you really want to go through any other, that report and any other kind of detail. And then obviously, then the second part of this was scheduling of the public hearing.
Is the only action item that we need to take at this point to schedule the public hearing?
Yes, but that's. And that's good was for Wednesday, May 5.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear somebody else trying to weigh in there? Okay. Hearing none, then a motion would be in order to schedule the noted, the scheduled, the public hearing, excuse me, for Wednesday, May the 5th, beginning at 9:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, Commissioner.
I have a question. I'll ask my question later, after this motion's taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners then? Any, any comment on scheduling the public hearing? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon? Mayor Cahoon, your vote? On the public hearing?
Renee is not speaking. Can you hear us, Renee?
Yes, I thought I said I.
She did. It's your turn. It's your turn, Mayor Cahoon. Your vote?
And can you hear us?
Oh, I'm sorry, me? Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, man, it's been a it's been a week. It's only Wednesday. It's been a week already. Excuse me. Okay, Greg?
I think that covered it.
Okay.
Mayor, may I might ask for a clarification?
Yes, please.
And it's just something that occurs to me that not many of us know, the South Virginia Dare Trail goes all the way to the Washington Bomb Bridge. And in District Four, just want to make sure that all properties between Gulf Stream Street and shouldn't that say South Old Oregon Lintlet Road on District Four? Not South Virginia Dare Trail?
I brought that up yesterday during my meeting with Greg.
Yeah, Commissioner Cahoon, I was looking at that. And from what I could tell, Gulf Stream Street seems to become South Virginia Dare Trail around the location of the church. And so we were basically saying everything in South Nagshead between that point and the Southern Town Line. And so that's why we put the slash there. I mean, I could go back and double check that.
Yeah, please double check because I know Virginia Dare Trail goes. The church is on South Virginia Dare Trail, yes.
And so that and that's why I did that because the address for the church was South Virginia Dare Trail, but the one next to it was Gulf Stream. And so.
We might want to make sure we put an explanation in there.
Right.
That South Virginia Dare Trail does go all the way around to it actually goes to Manio.
Right.
Okay, thank thank you for that clarification. Then the next item on our agenda would be item K two, update on Fire Station Twenty One repairs. Andy or Greg, who's doing that?
So I can handle that. The the Fire Station Twenty One project, this is something that's been an issue for some time now. The second floor bunk room at Fire Station Twenty One has had issues with maintaining comfort and controlling humidity and 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 keeping cool in the summertime. We've had our contractor Piedmont make several revisions to our HVAC system. Make make several revisions to our HVAC system for that building. And we still seem to be having problems. So we we had an architect, our on-call architect, look at look at the building to do an analysis of other issues that could be creating problems there. And we did find some some issues that probably date back to the original construction related to the building envelope. And so there are several areas of the building that weren't properly insulated. Some of the insulation, especially in the attic, has deteriorated. And the tower, the the watchtower, is currently not heated and cooled. And there's a lot of moisture and heat in that tower that keeps the the second floor hot. And so the architect came up with a solution that involves re-insulating the second floor with a spray closed cell spray foam insulation. It it involves some demolition to get inside the spaces that need to be insulated. Obviously, there's siding work and other things that has to be done, finished work. It involves closing off the third floor of the watchtower and then providing a vent through the roof and then providing air in the stair tower so that there's more of a it's more of a conditioned space. It also involves retrofitting the mechanical room to remove some of the the thermal intake here that's in there that's creating heat issues. So when you look at all those things combined, it becomes a fairly substantial project, especially, you know, when you have to involve a commercial contractor to do the work. Initially, we valued the work at fifty thousand dollars, and that's what we asked for the from the board back in November. You had the the workshop in October and you approved that. And unfortunately, the bids came in much higher than that. And that's why we're in front of you today. We'd like to get this project started. We need more money to do it. We have eliminated another five thousand dollars out of the price by working with a different mechanical contractor. And the contractor has has agreed to do that. And we've done some value engineering. The bid was around one hundred and twenty-one thousand. And we've gotten the the cost down to under a hundred thousand. But I think that's where we're going to end up short of of, you know, redoing this whole project. And so we'd like to ask the board for the money so we can get the project done in time for the hot season to provide some comfort to the firefighters. So that's what we have for you today is a budget amendment to allow us to start that project.
Andy, what year was the fire station built?
I believe it was built around two thousand five, two thousand six. Two thousand six, most likely.
Okay, thank you. Questions, commissioners?
Andy, is your is your contractor comfortable or confident that this is going to solve the problems that we're experiencing? Or is it a stab in the dark? Just throw in stuff at it to see if it's going to work?
I think they they feel like it it's going to work. I mean, the architect, we prepared a report after they did their initial investigation. And there were some deficiencies with the building that, you know, would would make any building not perform well. So given the work we've done to the mechanical system and this work, it should perform well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been called in to address similar issues on on other buildings and particularly of that kind of kind of vintage. And it, the lack of understanding about insulation and vapor barriers and how they work is pretty pervasive. And yeah, even today, without really close supervision, it gets done wrong probably ninety percent of the time. I mean, I had an argument through a building owner with his insulation contractor just last week because the insulation contractor wanted to do something that you know, I told him it was he was going to be completely wasting his money to do it. And not having seen the report, but having read the summary of this item, they were things that sort of made sense, unfortunately, but they do. Commissioners? Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if you need a a motion on a commotion that we approve the budget amendment.
Yes, please. Thank you. There's a sec, I have a motion and a second. The second one was from Commissioner Cahoon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
I need to.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Yes, ma'am. Please poll the board. And I'll pay attention.
Commissioner Brinkley? Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I will turn to Commissioner Cahoon. First, you have item.
The only item I have is going to be the government next education access channel budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Presented for your consideration is that budget. We finally have hired, after a vacancy of about a year, the second full-time position that we had budgeted. We're still assisting with grants to all the communities to do local programming. And also, we have one capital outlay of a new video server system. Other than that, those are the main highlights of the changes to the budget. So presented for your consideration is the budget for this year, and I will make a motion to adopt that budget to put it on the floor.
Second, wonderful. And I have a second to put that on the floor. Thank thank you. Anything else particularly exciting in there? Commissioner that you know of coming up this this year?
No, I think enhancing some of the videos that are going on, and a lot of the towns are buying new equipment. I think Nagshead has also included in some new equipment and getting that online should make a better programming channel. And if anybody's got any ideas for videos, please contact Roberta to get them scheduled.
Okay, right, very good. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. And Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so we will continue with our other commissioners for any items. Commissioner Brinkley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Sears?
Yes, Mayor, I I want to bring the attention. I let it go for a week, and it doesn't appear to have gotten fixed or noticed, but there is a section of roof on the east ridge of the town hall building that had lost some shingles over a little brief windstorm we had about a week, week and a half ago. Air breaking off continuously. I'd like to have somebody take a look at that before it becomes a bigger issue.
Excellent, very observant. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you. That brings us to the to the mayor's agenda. And a couple of items before the resolution. One, I want, I have had the pleasure of walking with public work staff on a couple of their Thursdays. They're taking a thirty-minute walk at lunchtime, whoever's available to to be there. And sometimes they do it, I think. I think a couple of different groups go out. And so I would really like to see some of the other departments follow that lead, having been with the public works folks. It it's a nice opportunity for them to get to know each other a little better, for for us to get to know them. And and it's a healthy thing to do. And so I I've enjoyed it. And I really, from a from a health and well-being standpoint, it would really be nice to see the rest of the departments take that up as well. Another item is that our town engineer and I, yesterday, were on a call. And next week, next Thursday, from nine to ten thirty, we will be part of a seminar called Adaptation for All. It's by the American Flood Coalition and the Netherlands. And it's a it's an international online conference. David and I will be speakers in a breakout session along with another speaker who is the principal advisor for the Rijkswaterstot in the Netherlands. And that is the Public Works Agency that is responsible for all of the water infrastructure in the Netherlands. So the famous Dyke System, for example, that agency was created in seventeen ninety-eight. So there is quite a bit of promotion for this. David will present our, some of our stormwater projects that we've accomplished and would bring slides. And the the goal of this is to and the reason for Nagshead's inclusion is so that small communities like ours can see that there are opportunities to address flood issues and have some sense of how they might how they might accomplish that. And Nagshead being a test, a test case. The the last item that I have that I want to bring to you before the resolution is on the event site. You saw that Commissioner Fuller and I were in a a meeting last week, another advisory committee meeting there. There was some media that covered that. And you've seen as well, an an email this morning from former mayor Bob Mower. The discussion has been about what kind of facility and what size facility perhaps that the the Visitor Bureau might wish to develop on that site. This is setting the hotel discussion aside, and it's a discussion about an event-only facility. And there was a presentation they had by an architect from Atlanta talking about various kinds of events and what those requirements were. But and 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 a question that has been asked repeatedly by Commissioner Fuller was finally answered, which is the difference between sort of the net space that they're envisioning for events and the gross size of the building. And so there was some of the discussion about a a building that could be twenty thousand square feet of net space for events, but it could be as large as forty thousand square feet, which is twice as large as what the town currently permits. And having a clear ceiling height of thirty-five feet, which is what our entire height limit is today. So I just wanted to bring that concern before you and understand that Commissioner Fuller and I have are are resisting speculative discussion about what size facility we might permit. But I also have the sense that perhaps we need to give a little feedback about, you know, what the limit is. So that the Visitor Bureau was not spending time and resources on an approach that is going to lead to a a building bigger than the town is interested in in accepting. And I will I will share with you my personal sense is that, you know, right now, we have an absolute building size limit of twenty thousand square feet. We've talked about this informally a little bit, that you know, if there was rationale for a somewhat larger building of, you know, perhaps there was some latitude there. But my sense is that a forty thousand square foot building on that site that would essentially be in opaque box at this point is probably approaching our limit. And I I'd like to go ahead and tell them that if that's if that's the sense of the board.
Kevin, if I could just comment, I couldn't agree with you more. I'm not interested in we have those standards for a reason. I'm not interested at all personally in increasing it for a a multi-purpose building that they want to do on that site. People I've talked to in the community before and after that article was written, I haven't had people telling me that they want that done. So I would I would hope that the town would continue to strongly oppose and make sure the Visitors Bureau clearly understands as far as these two items, the height and the the overall size, that we would be opposed to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Other commissioners?
I would agree with Commissioner Brinkley. That's not something, I mean, our our ordinances are laid out, although it may not always be clear, they're laid out. And I don't see any reason we should even attempt to go above the the twenty thousand square feet at this point unless somebody wants to bring us something that's amazing, then we can consider it at that time.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, are you putting your hand up?
Well, I do want to, I do want to say one thing. Obviously, I wasn't planning on talking about this today because we're in a process. I mean, there there's you know, it's not, it's it's just in a process. It's in a discussion phase. And we'll have another meeting next week with somebody else. The one thing that has always stuck out to me is that we limit the size of the building to twenty thousand square feet unless there's a hotel. And then if there's a hotel, we don't limit the size of the building. And that's just counterintuitive to me that, you know, if we if if we allow somebody to put something on that site, then that twenty thousand square foot goes out the window and becomes whatever. Um, and to me, if we're going to allow 20,000 with nothing, but over 20,000 with something, why don't we just allow something over 20,000? Um, if I'm making sense. Now, that being said, I'm not looking at a huge structure by any stretch of the imagination. And I did get my number that you mentioned, which is we keep talking about net floor area. And I, and I kept asking, what does net floor area mean? And what they said is net floor area means that number times 1.9 to 2.3. So the mayor is exactly right. If, if somebody's talking 20,000 square foot, be careful about what your understanding of that means. Because 20,000 square feet to some people means, could mean 42,000 square feet. So, but I, I say, we're still in a lot of discussion. Was, and my, my feeling is we're still in discovery. We're going to have a presentation next week by somebody from Padre Island. Um, so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves on this right now. And, you know, you know, I, as I keep telling everybody, our ordinance speaks for itself. It says what it says, and until that changes, these are the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you. Um, to me, the height limit is the height limit. Um, and what I agree with Commissioner Fuller about the process, but I also understand that, um, what I saw in the Coastal Times last week is reported was talking more about sporting events and so forth. It wasn't talking about what I thought the need was, which was for a space to have meetings and so forth, not necessarily hosting sporting events and talking about needing a high ceiling for volleyball. Um, I think that was kind of put in the cart before the horse, perhaps with the presentation, but that, I wasn't there, so I can't really speculate. But I think that they do need, anybody needs to understand, whether it's the visitors bureau or anybody else, that we do have the rules and ordinances in place. Unless we see something pretty extraordinary, um, I don't see us moving away from that.
Right. Thank you. Well, I appreciate that discussion and, and, um, the, it helps me have a, a sense of the board as we go into these meetings and continue the discovery process. The, uh, the discussion about what the potential there, uh, may be. So thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is a, um, resolution. Um, this was suggested, uh, or brought to our attention by, uh, Commissioner Cahoon, um, who's active in the J1 discussion. And, um, I would ask Commissioner Cahoon, before we, uh, before I read this, um, this, uh, resolution and we take action, yeah, uh, you have been involved in some meetings, I know. Would you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. Um, there was a meeting of tourism business leaders throughout the country, actually, who are trying to work on providing students for their businesses for this upcoming season, and nobody can get anything done based on this executive order from President Trump, uh, that he extended from December to March 31st of this year. The worry is that that's putting everybody behind the eight ball. And we'd really like to have this executive order lifted. Nobody's saying we want to go against the rules for health and safety with the coronavirus, but we need to be able to plan to move forward. And there is a concern that this executive order could become permanent, and I don't think anybody's interested in that, including the town with our lifeguard programs. So it's better to have it lifted than it is to wait for it just to expire or possibly extended. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, with that, I will read into the record, uh, this resolution to support immediate rescission of Presidential Executive Order 10052, which suspended the J1 visas. Whereas the town of Nagshead, its residents, local businesses and tourists depend on and value the students. You participate in the J1 visa exchange visitor programs, summer work travel programs to meet the demands of visiting tourists during the summer season. And whereas the presidential proclamation issued on June 22nd, 2020, suspended the summer work travel programs through December 31, 2020, with the possibility of extension. And whereas on December 31st, 2020, President Trump did extend the proclamation through March 31st, 2021. And whereas during the 2019 season, there were approximately 400 summer work travel participants employed within the town of Nagshead, while during the 2020 season, no more than 40 were employed within the town. And whereas due to the suspension and loss of the summer work travel program participants, summer work travel host employers have needed to reduce services and operating hours, close off portions of their facilities and turn away customers. And whereas the town of Nagshead Ocean Rescue, which has relied on summer work travel participants in seasons past, has also been impacted, having approximately 20 fewer lifeguards, resulting in the reduction of lifeguard stands from 15 to 10, and negatively impacting this critical service. And whereas a recent survey of summer work travel host employers found the average employer laid off or furloughed 13 employees each and lost on average $250,000 in revenues because of the loss of summer work travel participants. And whereas the town of Nagshead is committed to ensuring American employees are protected during these difficult economic times, but that not nearly enough Americans are applying for the seasonal jobs offered in Nagshead, and certainly not enough to replace the lost summer work travel program participants. And whereas waiting for the proclamation to expire on March 31st, 2021 will put the summer 2021 program in jeopardy, denying businesses adequate time to plan for seasonal staffing and jeopardizing the town of Nagshead's potential for a fully-staffed ocean rescue division. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Nagshead determines the immediate resumption of the summer work travel program is necessary to the immediate and continuing economic recovery of businesses within the town of Nagshead, wholeheartedly endorses the State Department's Summer Work Travel Program and, one, petitions the White House and Biden administration to immediately rescind Executive Order 10052. Two, asks the federal congressional delegation for the town of Nagshead to engage the White House in support of this rescission. Three, directs the clerk of the town to send a copy of this resolution to the president and all federal congressional members representing Nagshead. Four, encourages all town residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the need for the resumption of the summer work travel program and to engage their congressional representatives, asking them to support this program as well. And five, supports the Outer Banks International Student Outreach Program and summer work travel programs as they help our town resume this program adopted at the town of Nagshead, North Carolina, this third day of March, 2021. Uh, and a motion would be in order?
They moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Um, and Madam Clerk, I would ask that you apply my electronic signature to this um, and, and get it out to our, uh, delegation as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us to other business. Uh, is there other business to come for the board today?
Mayor, Mayor, I would just note that, uh, next week you have a meeting with, uh, Steve Strauss from Developmental Associates on the, um, town manager search process.
Yes, thank you. So, um, the, the next motion then would be, uh, to recess this meeting to Wednesday, March the 10th at 9:00 AM, where we will enter into closed session, um, to discuss town manager candidates with developmental associations. And that motion, uh, motion to that effect would be in order.
They moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, great. I want to thank everybody for, uh, uh, very efficient and short meeting today. Appreciate it and look forward to seeing you all next week, um, so that we can move along the manager hiring process. Thank you.
Mayor, I didn't poll, wait, Mayor, I didn't poll the board on that last one.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fuller?
Uh, where are we going to meet next week?
That's a good question. Huh, I don't know that. Um, suggestions from staff? Uh, would it be appropriate for us to return, uh, since we will be in person to the, um, fire station? And we will have additional folks in the room?
Yes, Mayor, I, I can work with, uh, we can work with that.
Is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then, uh, then, then we will, uh, uh, join ourselves back together next, uh, Wednesday, March the 10th. And we do need to vote on this, um, adjournment. So Madam Clerk, I would ask you to please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.
Too.